It's Thursday, November 19th, 2015. Please join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Glenn Hardy, and can we help you?
First, I'd like to apologize for what happened this afternoon to Mallory. I'm just a little confused because I have two separate licenses, one's for a six-day and one's for a three-day. But from what I understand now, the three-day is for the acoustic versus the six-days where it's for the DJ or karaoke. So I was a little confused in that. You know, I was trying to save a lot of aggravation by coming up here for all of us. But what I'm requesting now, if possible, if I can combine both of them for the six-day, just to have the one license where actually I just passed on my paperwork for the upcoming year.
Okay. So what we'd be doing is combining the two licenses and extending it to six days. So it would include acoustical, television, DJ, karaoke, and jukebox, right?
Yes.
For six days rather than the three and five.
Right, exactly.
Three and six, sorry.
That's where my confusion was, but I did come up here tonight to request for live entertainment for the night before Thanksgiving. Just the one solo person for the acoustic. Would you like to look at these?
Actually, yes, please.
Make a motion that we amend the license to, for six days, to include acoustical music.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Acoustical music. Actually, there's Fergie John there, Mallory, about the, as approved...
I call it SB Cab, the State Building Code Appeals Board that Mr. Hardy went to for the determination.
In accordance with the decision by the State Building Board.
Okay, I got a motion.
That'll be for the rest of the year.
I got a motion, and I second it. Any other discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So voted.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
This is for the end of 2015 or 16?
Just till the end of this year until his renewal, and his renewal will include all the...
We'll have to make that change then.
All right, so the renewal will include the solo, the... Okay, okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would like.
All right. Thank you all.
Yeah, anytime.
Thank you.
That's what we're here for.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We don't have to change the hours, right?
You're very welcome.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting just a moment, I'd like to point out that Chairman Maloney is unable to be with us tonight due to an illness in her family, and she apologized for not being here.
Okay. I will move along. Town business except the minutes of October 21st, 2015. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So voted. Except for review the minutes of November 4th, 2015.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, C is update on the town website. Mallory, maybe you can...
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm going to go super fast to get this going.
We'll have to scroll over, then we'll come back.
You want to hold that one?
Actually, can you just do a quick?
Yep, we have a couple of quick things, so...
Yeah, and then this will be good.
Okay, so we'll... The next one will be update on the Veterans Day Parade, which we had plenty to talk about. Well, I guess we could get all through it there, but it was a lousy day, and things got kind of filed up, and even in the lineup and everything else. But maybe next year the Parade Committee will have to address some of those things. Usually, Megan McMahon usually is right there, and these things just don't happen, but they did happen this year, and...
Well, I think with all the inclement weather on them, they still had a pretty good turnout. And the parade was still a pretty good salute to our veterans, so thank you.
Yeah, the meeting was there, and you know, we could buy it, and a lot of places are canceled because of the inclement weather. Okay, anything else on the parade?
I have nothing.
Opioid overdose, Delta. So what do we have on that?
Yeah, the...
On that.
As you know, it's an unfortunate epidemic up here in the northeastern, specifically in the Boston, Massachusetts market. So our local town, the town of West Bridgewater, has partnered with both Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, and Bridgewater State University. And we're now compiling data to the best of our ability to be able to see exactly what it is that's going on in reference to opiate overdose, and how we're doing and being able to negate it. You know, at the end of the day, you can only manage what you measure, so we're making every attempt now so that we can actually measure what the real statistics are. So you will see on page 18, that on that page you will see that from January 1st through November 10th, that there is between the Bridgewater's, the University of Bridgewater, and also the town of Whitman, that there was 117 individuals that unfortunately overdosed. Of those 117, you will see that West Bridgewater had the fewest amount, which is obviously good, and we had six non-fatalities. We administered Narcan seven times, and those non-fatalities for a total of 13. So 13 out of 117 is somewhere around 11% of all the regional opiate overdose issues were within the confines of West Bridgewater. To be clear, the documents or the data is structured from jurisdiction. So that means that if a Brockton resident is in West Bridgewater, it would be registered as being in West Bridgewater, the same way that if a resident that lives in West Bridgewater, if the incident happened in Brockton, it would not be in this data. This is compiled by our police departments based on where it actually occurs versus where the addresses are. So I think our local police and fire departments are doing a pretty good job, one administering the Narcan, trying to save lives, certainly using the data to the best of our ability to be able to go forward. But again, I thought as an FYI to the board, it would be important for you to know where we are, and obviously, over time, we will continue to monitor it.
Well, I'm glad we're coming, addressing it, and they're doing a great job doing it.
Thank you.
David, do you know, is the Narcan in all our police crews and the fire apparatus, or just fire apparatus?
No, both police and fire actually carry it on their body.
Great, thank you.
All right. Are you ready with the website, or...? No? All right, you're still working on it. All right, we'll just continue down because we're doing all right. ABC license renewal process. Obviously, there's a change in the way we do business. I talked to Mallory a little bit about that, and I talked to you a little bit about that. So that's quite a change.
Well, what it is at this point is that ABCC, which is the regulatory authority at the state level in reference to licensing for alcohol, is looking to potentially change some of the ways that they collect and process data for renewals for liquor stores and non-liquors, for on and off-premise liquor facilities. Currently, as you know, in December, we do the entire renewal process, and they're trying to leverage the use of the internet in the way they would collect fees and collect paperwork. At this point, they're not proposing that they're going to make any changes, they're looking for input. I think Mallory and I, and I'll turn it over to Mallory in a moment, she could speak to it as well, since she's the one that invests a lot of time in December every year of doing it. But I think we're both concerned that we certainly don't want to lose local control. So what they're looking for is for us to complete a survey as to how our feelings are in reference to whether or not we would like to see a change or modification in the process, and based on your feedback, then Mallory will then fill out the survey and send it appropriately. So I'll turn it over to Mallory.
So really, that's exactly right. The ABCC recommended that we get the flavor of our boards before we answered, and this all comes about because the ABCC is working to put all of their applications online. Already, you have to go on through their website and fill out applications in order to make any changes, but now they want you to actually file online. And so they're working this process out with all of the communities, and as part of this system that they're building, they thought, well, maybe you, you know, after some feedback from the communities, they thought that maybe the communities would be interested in also renewing online. So that, you know, someone like Glenn Hardy, who has a license in town, would just go online and renew their application, and then we would all be notified. So that's, and they're asking for our feedback. Personally, if you want my opinion, I use this renewal time to kind of check in with the licensees, see how they're doing, and maintain a little bit of a relationship with them, and, you know, if things have changed, we can... Because a lot of people are just not sure about what they need to do, so it just provides a good relationship between the town and the businesses that are in it.
One of the things, you know, like we talked, we do little things every year, we try to change to make things easier for everybody, and if we don't have that communication time with them, there's really no time that we communicate with them. Like, I know we've worked on extending everyone's license to the maximum. How would they know that that's what our goals are, or... It's taken away a little bit, not necessarily the control, but the communication. But I'd like to make a motion, Ellen, that we allow Mallory, as the processing agent for the board, to complete the application at her discretion.
Yeah, I think the way we do it now is fine. You know, we touch with everybody, and you know, that's where it should be. This has been working out for years, and I'd like to see the thing stay the same. Who else second the motion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. So let's move ahead along. National Grid, Massachusetts, 2015, community incentive.
So you may recall that a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, is that the town of West Bridgewater, through your board, partnered with a private entity referred to as Next Step Living. Their primary focus is to be able to assist homeowners in finding energy-related savings, and they've done a pretty nice job within the town contacting residents and showing them how, whether it's through insulation, LED light bulbs, better doors and windows, and then finding money for them to be able to upgrade their homes from an energy infrastructure savings standpoint. With that said, National Grid for calendar year 2016 has a grant proposal for up to $40,000 for up to five communities to be able to take part in, but we have to achieve certain goals the National Grid will give us, and those goals will then allow people in town to achieve additional energy savings. We don't know what the goals are yet. Right now, we're just in the application phase. So what Mallory has done is she has put together a support letter. She is, we are going to be requesting that the board take a vote to endorse our search in trying to get the grant. We have no idea if the grant is going to be awarded at $500 or $5,000. I doubt we would get all $40,000. And the reason I bring that up is because what we will also have to determine is that if we are awarded grant money, is what community-wide energy efficiency project that we would apply that money to. So for instance, if we were able to receive $5,000 for achieving our goals, we can't just take the five grand and put it into our general fund. It would have to go towards a specific purpose. So they're looking for us to identify that. That's a little difficult, because again, $500, $25,000 is a big spread. So, I mean, I have a couple of ideas. What I was thinking, though, is that since it's going to take a little while before we can actually determine this, is that if the board is so inclined, is that you would take a vote to support, ratify the decision, we will apply for the grant, and then just delegate to me that as we discuss in the future, is that I'll either come up with something or I'll place something at that point to National Grid.
Okay. Any other question?
Make a motion to sign the letter of endorsement, or the letter of interest in the grant program.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Thank you.
Okay. Communication reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Accept a letter of resignation June, and Ronald Metcalf of the Agricultural Commission.
We shall accept with our letter of thanks.
Yeah, I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Okay, correspondent, public to determine the course of action. Update on the craft fair held at the Middle Senior High School.
Helen, I just want to speak as a member of the Lions Club. The Lions Club had a 32nd annual craft fair. It's a great community event held every year, and I got to say, the school was an outstanding host to our event at the high school, and the staff over there did a great job preparing for our event, and we hosted over 1,200 people from around the region came to visit. Many, many residents just coming to see the new school and maybe pick up a few items here and there, but it was a great, great event. And also, I want to take the opportunity to thank Lamar Advertising. As you know, the town has a billboard on the highway, and Lamar, is it Lamar, correct?
That is correct.
Lamar donated a billboard for the Lions Club for the craft fair, and it's a great way to communicate, to bring businesses, people to town, and as we know, people don't just come to the craft fair and go home, they go to our gas stations and our restaurants and shops and whatnot, so it's a great draw, and thank you to them for contributing to the Lions Club and for contributing to our community.
Very good.
We also continue to advertise on that billboard for our town general advertisement. Right now, it still has a little slogan, "West Bridgewater, a great place to learn, work, live, and play." But really, a thank you to the school department and the numerous organizations, PTO and the music groups and the music boosters, I'm sorry, that participated.
Okay, all right. Anything left? We should send some letters out to thank you with a parade, too. Participants, we usually send them out every year.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mallory, are we all set on the website?
And you know what? What we'll do is why don't we finish the agenda, we'll take a few minutes recess, we'll get the thing working, and then we'll come back if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
No public comments at this time? No?
Helen, while we're on public comment period, I do quickly want to say, you know, we had a town meeting not too long ago, and a lot of people worked really hard on a bylaw that didn't pass, and I do want to say thank you to them. You know, every year, I'm sure you hear at any time a shovel goes in the ground, what are you guys doing to preserve the town? This group came forward with an idea, maybe it wasn't popular with everybody, but a lot of effort was put into it, and I just publicly want to thank that group for their time. If you were in favor of it or against it, regardless, their efforts were great, and the goal was to help preserve an area of the town, so I just wanted to say thank you to that group.
Okay, and I'd like to thank them, too. They put a lot of effort into the thing, and it went before the townspeople, and the townspeople are the ones that spoke, and I know they're pretty well disappointed about that, but that's what happens when you bring something up before the town, and what is they thought was best for the town, and they voted, and that's the democratic way.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we can take a...
We got still some more items here, one more.
Well, I got the...
Center of town.
Oh, the center of town, yeah.
And then there's the second page, too.
But that's on the other, that's on the other...
Did you want to complete the agenda first?
You want to complete that?
I think so. That way it'll give us a few minutes to...
Yeah.
We might as well tag our year, so...
Yeah, so if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, if we could complete the agenda, and then we'll go into a recess, we'll come back, we will then do the PowerPoint presentation that Mallory put together, and then we would vote to go into executive session.
All right, so go with the town administrator's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Center of town, cement retaining wall.
Yeah, so, you know, excuse me, if you sit at the center of town on Route 106 heading towards Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, you'll notice that Dunkin' Donuts is sitting on your left-hand side. There is a cement concrete retaining wall that is being built as part of the project. And, you know, it's pretty clear that while you're sitting there, that it's not very attractive. And at the end of the day, we're spending, or the town is spending, and the state is spending $3 million to make improvements to the intersection, but part of the improvements to the intersection is obviously in reference to public safety, but the other improvement is to beautify the center of town as well. So with that said, if you look where that retaining wall is, immediately to the right is a very nice, large retaining wall that was actually implemented by and paid for by the owner of the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza. It is nicely stone veneered, and when they're situated side by side, it really is unseemly. So with that said, I spoke to the local Mass DOT rep. The last local Mass DOT rep said that that is what the plan's calls for. He and the contractor both agree that really, it's really not in the spirit of what it should look like, and I would think as a board and as a local town, we would want our center of town to have some type of consistency in with the look. So with that said, I have sent a letter over to District 5, which, Mass DOT that oversees the construction project, and I'm asking for a change order so that way we can match that existing wall, so that way it will look good for many years to come.
I think it's a great idea. In fact, that was a beautiful wall that was up there, and to just get rid of that, and then it's going to be half and half, and now that ain't going to look good.
Helen, I think one of the things is we have a center of town bylaw, and he was actually required to put up an aesthetically pleasing wall.
Yeah.
Dunkin' Donuts building was the first one to build under the downtown bylaw, and, you know, I think they did a beautiful job, and then for us to leave a cement wall is horrific, and, you know, I took some pictures of them a couple of weeks ago. I was just dumbfounded that that is the finished product, and people keep saying, well, you get what you pay for, well, the state's paying for it. It's our money that the state's spending. It's all taxpayers' money.
Yeah, I agree.
And you can't just do it, you just have to do it right. And while the project's going on, I think we need to stand very firm that that has to be corrected and match what we made the property owner build.
And I certainly will push it through on that committee with the Mass DOT, and tell them how important that is, that, well, it'll be put back the way it was.
The wall is there, it's just an additional wall that was built in front of it.
Yeah, right, right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is in reference to the Plymouth County mosquito control project. As you're aware, every single year is part of our cherry sheet expenses that we are charged, is that we are part of the mosquito control project to the tune of around $32,000. We have an opportunity as to whether or not we want to continue to participate in the program. It's an automatic charge that's assessed to us as part of our county fees, so their assessment to us this year will be $32,613. That is for FY '17, because it's already started the budget process for next fiscal year. It represents a 2% increase year over year. The overall budget has gone up about 2% as well, so it's consistent with each other. So I am just looking for, if you want to continue to be part of the mosquito control project, a vote of support.
Yeah, I think it's great, being here in a town that's basically wet. I mean, we get a lot of mosquitoes, and I think this is a good project. I'd like to continue this.
Second?
I'll make a motion, in fact, that we continue this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the 40B project up on Scotland Street. I've spent some considerable time on this. I went up, I met with Mass Housing, I've met with the developer multiple times, I've met with chairman of some respective boards that are involved, along with our conservation agent. I've also visited the field up on Scotland Street as to where it's going to be, and at the end of the day, when I take a look at it, I think we're all for development, we understand progress is going to take place, but I really think that this is a gem of a field that I think the town would be really disheartened to lose at a later date. So I have to, on behalf of the board, I have to present a letter to Mass Housing as to what, if any, concerns that the board in the town would have. The zoning board of appeals is preparing their own respective document, because they will be the ones ultimately permitting the position. And I also have a couple of other concerns, because the developer that was with us before has done a couple of other developments in town, and again, I've spent some considerable amount of time over the past week digging through old documents, and over an eight-year period of time, that developer was not that responsive on a handful of other developments in town. In fact, one of the developments, which is the Copper Beach development, we ended up accessing the bond because he was unresponsive, did not return letters, did not show up to public hearings, did not show up to requests by the planning board. That was not a 40B, that was a traditional subdivision, and he, you know, he basically abandoned the project. So although the finished project may look good, roads, catch basins, easements, all those other items fell on the town to have to handle. So with that said, I'm not so sure that that may be a developer that we want to continue to partner with. Again, not my decision, but I want to bring the information to you so you are aware of it. There are also about 200 residences or so that are on Scotland Street that are overlooking that field. My guess is they probably wouldn't be very happy either if they've, some of those homes are $400,000, $500,000 homes, they built it, they moved into it, and I am sure that a Realtor along the way said, hey, this is all wetland, which three-quarters of it is, it'll never be built on, and charged them a premium to purchase a home that's overlooking wetland, thinking it would never be built on. So that is my concerns. Now, again, it would bring in tax revenue. Sooner or later, places in town are going to get developed, so I can certainly understand the benefits from it as well, but since I have to write the letter, I would like to see exactly how the board, what direction the board would like me to go in, and then I will write the letter accordingly.
Well, I feel, I asked a lot of questions when he came in and being in the wetland. Let's face it, that's the Hockamont Swamp over there, and there's a body of water goes right straight through there, and a lot of the things that I, you know, really didn't get answered there, and the water department, the narrowness of that road that's out there, that's still one of the old roads, and with Bridgewater Industrial Park down the street. I don't see anything, who's going to be putting... I don't even know what kind of a main they have down there. There's a lot of things that, you know, just to go in there and cause a lot more expense, but like you said, I was on this board, and I've been here for a good many years, and some of the things that we'd asked him to do just weren't done, you know, on those both developments he has there. So I'll go along and I, as far as, you know, and send a letter out to him, and I think it's a good idea, and I want to thank you for your research into it, and I know you looked into it. I mean, you know, we're all looking for, you know, tax base and all that, but I don't know if this is the thing to do. We just built a new school, and now we could load that up. We get a couple of them there, and we're just not going to have the room over there.
Well, other here, as you know, I wasn't in favor of the single-family homes. I do like the cottage living style, smaller homes gives people an alternative to private homes with a yard to maintain and everything. I was never in favor of the homes being built in the second, first phase, I guess that's the larger. Large homes being built on postage-stamped lots simply just doesn't meet what the towns wanted. The people voted minimum size lots with minimum frontage, and this will bypass all those regulations and build a community within our community that simply isn't desired by anyone that lives here. Well, those bylaws wouldn't have been passed. Again, I do, you know, the cottages even, I had reservations, and I know Nancy did, being told there are three-bedroom cottages. To me, that's not a cottage, that's a home, those are condos. The cottage is a one- or a two-bedroom house without the possibility of expansion on very small lots or shared land, something like that I'm in favor of. I know Marioni's proposed it years ago. The bylaw change failed, so they weren't able to build it. The board did endorse that concept. This just goes too far, it's too much on too little parcel of land. That's very sensitive, so I will make a motion that the board go forward strongly opposing the project, specifically with this developer.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Send a letter about them.
Thank you. And the last item on my agenda is in reference to the dog park. As you're aware, at town meeting, the town meeting appropriated $10,000, which would be about a 10% match of what we're able to secure from a grant agency, to be able to build a very nice dog park. The piece of property that we have targeted is adjacent to Satan's Church. The, there seems like that church there may have some situation going forward as to whether or not it's going to remain operational or not, but at the end of the day, the town's in a very good position, because our town council happens to also represent the Catholic Diocese of Fall River and works hand in hand with the Catholic Diocese of Boston. So we know that eventually, since there will be a transfer of ownership, that lawyers are going to have to get involved, we're going to have to have a contract drawn up, whether or not we lease the property, break off the property, so it's just an FYI to the board, that I will be engaging town council, asking him to speak to the lawyers on their side, and start the drafting process to see as to whether or not we can ultimately secure that piece of property on behalf of the dog park.
Okay. So there's nothing else on the agenda, and I know Mallory's working on the website. We'll take a five-minute recess, or maybe if it takes a little bit longer, and then we can present the website.
Could we go into executive session and come back into open session? Could we go into executive session and come back into open session?
It's just that Ted will be waiting.
Yeah, well, either way, he's gonna be waiting, so the executive session shouldn't be too long.
I mean, the only reason I wanted it up there is so you could actually see the website, so however important that is to you, otherwise I can just verbally tell you what it is.
You want to do that?
Huh?
Real quick, if we can't do it, I'll just do it verbally, I don't know why, I had enough to.
Five-minute recess.
You wanna recess? Okay, recess, five-minute recess, uh, motion? Okay, uh, we're discussing the website and Jerry, uh, and Mallory, you're still working on it? And, uh, we don't have the, uh, the full board here tonight and we would, it'd be nice to have the full board there when we discuss this thing and, uh, so we're gonna postpone this.
Well, we're gonna learn about the, the website.
We'll learn about the website and then, but, and the initial presentation that, uh, we, we will do a full presentation.
Well, you'll, we'll reveal the actual site, we'll wait for you to answer that. So, I just wanted to give you a quick little, oh, sorry, a quick little update, um, where we are, you can see in your packets, I have like a little visual for you.
Yep.
And, uh, I put little check marks on what we've been through and it was actually pretty much an accelerated program. Um, this did not take us thirteen weeks, so that was pretty exciting. Um, so we're at the start, weeks thirteen and fourteen, they're, um, migrating their content or our content, they're putting everything that we have on our current website according to the site map that I sent into them and, um, they'll be building, you know, actual West Bridgewater's website. One of, um, the benefits of what we wanted, we wanted to have email subscriptions so people could subscribe to new, a newsletter that we create or minutes being posted, agendas, whatever they might be interested in, that's up and running, we've tested it, we've, um, established our emails, like noreply@westbridgewater.com, things like that. Again, citizen request center, that's where people will be able to quickly report a pothole, um, a streetlight, um, request or that it's out, something like that, um, or any, it's kind of a quick listing of who's who in West Bridgewater and who they can contact when they have a problem. We also set up a Google Analytics so we can, um, tell the traffic on our site and how much it's being used. Um, our migration for all of our content being switched over from our old site to our new site, we began that on the tenth, not too long ago, and then Jackie and I are gonna undergo some training for how to edit the, the actual website and that's on the third. So once that happens, we should be up and running and I'm very excited because our domain name is a lot better than what it has been, so now it's westbridgewaterma.org. And I was gonna give you a preview of the site, but we'll just wait.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for it.
It looks good.
Yeah, we can see it.
Suspense, right? Only adds the suspense.
No, um, in all honesty, Mallory's done excellent job working on it, I think you're gonna be very happy when we see it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can make a recommendation, is that we were going to enter into executive session this evening, we posted that we were going to enter into executive session, it's strategy session for upcoming negotiations with non-union personnel, but without a full board, I'm recommending that we do not enter into executive session and, um, in that we postpone that for our next meeting.
Okay, I'll agree with that. I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so, uh, that's, uh, that's the end, we don't have anything else then, huh?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.